Good evening. I'd like to call on the Sparks Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 7th, at 6:00. And have your call placed.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney, Deputy Attorney.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for general public comment, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. Again, if you hear from the public and do want to talk on an agenda item, you'll have that opportunity later during a public comment. But ZB, here. Okay, seeing none, we'll close that. And we'll have an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion moved. Okay. Now we'll have approval of the minutes.
Move to approve that submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, a motion and a second, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain from that, since I was not here. So, we'll move on from that. And now announcements and committee reports.
Announcements. The first is that there will be no planning commission meeting-
On the 21st of May, which would have been the, you know, the second meeting that we might have some months. And then, in June, we will be having a planning commission meeting on the 3rd Thursday, in other words, on the 18th of June, but not on the 4th. Not the 1st Thursday.
That's perfect.
All right. So do we have any informational items?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move to the public hearing items. First on the agenda is PCN 15019, Piramid Macarons Cell Tower relocation. Karen Melby presenting.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you tonight is a consideration of possible action on a special use permit to allow for the construction of a new 90-foot telecommunication tower located at 560 Queen Way. This is the square right there. This would be Pyramid Highway. This is Queen Way. This is the First Christian Church property. The Crown Castle cooperates a wireless communication tower at 3,400 Pyramid, which is down here, which is a stealth as a religious monument tower right now. With the widening of the Pyramid Highway, the Regional Transportation Commission has acquired the church property and the existing wireless communications will be demolished. So they're trying to construct a new telecommunication tower to serve this area. The special use permit is to allow for this telecommunication tower to be constructed within the required 75 percent height of the setback requirement on the western property This is the site plan for the church, and they're proposing to put it right here in this area, to be leased in that area. Our code requires that setbacks are 75 percent the height of the tower, which would require the setback to be 67 and a half feet. Because of the existing improvements on the property, they put it over here, which doesn't meet the setback on the western boundary. It does meet the setbacks on the three other sides, but it doesn't meet the western boundary. It'll be at about 35 feet from the property line. They wanted to locate that to accommodate the existing improvements on site, but also to place it the farthest from single-family homes in their area. The code also requires that the telecommunication be a distance of 300 percent of the height of the tower from residential. And this tower will be, the closest residence will be 278 feet from the tower itself. The third requirement in our code for location of towers is that it have to be, if it's a 90-foot tower, it has to be 1,500 feet from any other existing tower. And this tower is with, exceeds the 1,500 feet from any other towers. The closest towers are down in Sparks Morgantile, I think is the name where the railies is, that shopping center. That's the closest cell towers. The proposal is to have a stealthed telecommunication tower. And I've got some, the above picture is from Pyramid Highway, the existing, and then the lower one is a photosimulation showing what the tower would look like from Pyramid Highway. The other one we have is a view from Queen Way, looking onto the church property, the existing view, and then this shows you the telecommunication tower in photosimulation. This, in my staff report, has outlined the alternative sites that they looked at. I won't cover those today. The proposed tower will be an unmanned tower, visited by a technician approximately twice a month to check the facility and the performance of the equipment. A standby generator and batteries will be located with the equipment, and I have added condition number nine in the, on the list of conditions that restricts the hours of this operation of the generator, except, of course, if there's an emergency, they should, would be able to operate the generator. Staff compliance with the nine criteria that's located in our telecommunications section of the Sparks Municipal Code, and staff is recommending approval with nine conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Karen, would you explain, please, the stealth wireless communication?
Exactly the stealth, the wireless stealth is?
Stealth, it's hidden under some other, it doesn't look like it's a power, antennas and stuff that stick out. It's, and what this will be is it's stealth behind this structure, this four-legged structure that will have that. I mean, and the wires will be coming up through the middle, so you won't see the antennas or the wiring. You will see the ground equipment, but it will be located behind a screen fence.
And as we discussed in the study session, it will be bright pink, bright purple, kind of color blend with the earth around it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Do we have any other more questions for Karen? Is the applicant here and would like to speak?
Good evening, commissioners and chairman. My name is Baz Lynn, represent the applicant, Crown Castle, and the only thing I would add to that is, of course, we support the action of the planning commission, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
I have a quick one. I was reading in the staff report, you did try to attempt to contact the current landowner of the current tower that's behind the Piramid Morgantile Shopping Center without success.
Uh huh.
Was there just, didn't return phone calls, or was there no?
I was not the individual making or placing those phone calls. That was handled from another, another location where they do have site acquisition folks on staff. I'm strictly here for the zoning and planning application, but as I understand it, yes, they did make multiple outreaches to that landlord with the intent of perhaps being able to locate within that facility. And according to the alternative site analysis that I was presented, that I placed within the application package, they were unable to reach them. Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question about condition nine, if that's all right. How is the standby generator used for maintenance purposes?
Oh, sorry, direct it to me. The standby generators are there in case of a power outage to power the facilities for a number of hours, depending on the requirement. However, they can't, the generators cannot sit dormant for long periods of time without running if nothing else, simply to keep their O-rings sealed and lubricated and make sure that the fuel flows.
All right. Can I suggest a change to the, to the first sentence in the condition? I prefer to read, "The standby generator shall only be operated between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday," and then the second sentence can stay unchanged.
Would you take a look at that real quick?
Only be operated for maintenance purposes, turning?
We're talking about it still needs to be operated when the power gets down.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Are you talking strictly to testing?
I'm just talking about the testing. The second sentence-
The second sentence, it says that its use operation during power outages are disasters.
Right.
So, he's not changing that sentence. He's only adding the only.
Want to still make sure that you-
Thank you. We would like to be able to do that. That's the intent.
Yeah.
When we have an emergency.
Yeah.
Do you have any objections to that, the addition of that word?
No, we do not.
This is a public hearing night. Does anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Sir, if you could come up and-
I'll say my chair.
State, state your name, and when you're done, if you haven't signed in, sign in.
Thank you very much, Roger Pellon, and I am the vice-chair of Sparks First Christian Disciples of Christ, and I'd like to compliment staff. I think they did a very thorough review and analysis, and I think that the findings for approval can be made and the conditions are reasonable. With that, if you have any particular questions from the property owner's perspective, that's really why I'm here.
I don't think, that you, there was no objection?
There was none that came to the church. I understand that you had some phone calls.
I had one neighbor come and talk to me about it.
Was that the, was that the?
Yes, he was concerned about the tower blocking his view.
Nothing to, there's no change at all?
No.
Who is the, who will or is the owner of the property to the immediate west that is the closest to this?
That's a church. I don't know the name of the church. Do you know?
That is, if I recall correctly, that's the Reno Arch Mission Estacorian Church, I believe. There's, there's so many of us in that little, that little cluster in the corner there.
And there's been no objection from them, given the closeness of the, to them.
We have not received any comment from them, and they were notified in part of the public noticing process.
They get a, they get a free cross, so, perfect.
Thank you.
See you, Roger.
Any more discussion from the commissioners?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Volz? Close, close public comment?
I'm going to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 15019, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings that set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval, 1 through 9, with 9 as amended, as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Go ahead, motion and a second. Any more discussion? So we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes, and good luck with your cell tower.
Aye.
So we'll now move to PCN 15017, Sullivan Lane Apartments, and Karen Melby.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you tonight is a consideration and possible action on a master plan amendment and also a rezone for a property located at 1250 Sullivan Lane. And we'll have to, hold on a minute before I, she's doing double duty over there. This is an aerial photograph of the area. This is Sullivan Lane here. This would be the property here. The property is 1.4 acres. Currently, there are four single-family homes and two apartment buildings located on this property. The multifamily buildings are on the north, and then the four houses are scattered throughout the southern portion of the property. There's a total of 22 units located on this property current. The applicant is, would like to redevelop this property and is requesting to add the property into our TOD district in order to redevelop with a higher density. Any redevelopment of this site, once it's within the TOD area, or Transit Oriented Development District, would have to comply with those TOD standards, which are a higher standard than our zoning code. The TOD corridor plan establishes a long-term land use plan for the heart of Sparks. The TOD plan designates a mixture of land uses with higher densities and includes an integrated multimodal transportation system, which includes walking or walkable areas, biking and bus. Hence, that's why we called it the Transit Oriented Development. It's multimodable of transportation. Staff, let me show you the maps. This is the existing master plan designation. You'll see that the TOD boundary is along the north of this property, and they are requesting to shift the master plan boundary down around their property and make it the same designation that's directly to the north, which is mixed residential. As far as zone change, the property is zoned currently R16, which is a single-family residential debt property designation. So actually, the 22 units is not in conformance with what's built on the property of the 22 units. The-
Tell me again what you just said.
There are 22 units on this property where it's a single-family dwelling designation zoning, and so the property is essentially in nonconformance with the zoning currently. So with this request, it would bring actually the property more into conformance. This is, so what they're asking for is to shift the TOD boundary and make this TOD zoning, which then the zoning is, would be what the designation is in the TOD plan of the mixed residential. So this would actually bring the property more into conformance than it is actually developed currently. Staff find that the proposed land use and rezonies consistent with the findings for the master plan amendment and the zoning findings. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the master plan amendment and then forward a recommendation of approval for certification for the master plan amendment, and also forward a recommendation of approval for the zone change to the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Karen, would you explain why it was existing zoning is nonconforming?
It was, I'm not sure. I tried to research that, but the buildings were all built before we had a planning department in the city of Sparks, and so our records didn't go back that far, and our building permits don't go by that, back that far, because these buildings were built in the 40s and the 60s, and our records don't go back that far. So I couldn't research it and find out how it was built, how all these units were put up, built on this property.
So zoning must have come from Washoe County?
That's my estimation, yes.
Okay.
So currently, by moving it into the Transit Oriented Development, what does that essentially mean? As far as the increase in the standards and the designs, would that typically make it better, typically a better property, more stringent on the designs and et cetera, by moving into the TOD?
The TOD standards require certain things, like a mixture of building materials on the structures. So they'll have to have a mixture of different types of buildings, so it's not can be, it's not going to be all T-111 siding or something like that. It'll be a mixture of quality products. The other thing that the TOD requires is that the buildings are placed up to the, next to the street, so that the parking lot's not visible from the street. So that would also enhance the property in that you will be looking at a higher quality development, and then the parking and the activities are within the interior of the property, where the buildings then would be on the perimeter. And that's some of the standards that are in there. It has different parking standards, has different landscaping standards also.
So essentially, just multifamily zoning, the TOD is stricter than just a strict multifamily zone?
Correct.
And more density?
It increases the density.
All right. Any more questions for Karen? Yes, Doug?
Karen, would you talk briefly about how the increase in density relates to the various modes of transportation, and then how that fits in the larger scheme as the city redevelops from the inside out in the context of urban development?
Well, first of all, the intent of the TOD plan was to, I guess, I hate to say, but like incentives to encourage people to develop within our urban core area, as opposed to what they call greenfields and going up into like Spanish Springs Valley. So this was to encourage, and one of the incentives is to have higher densities. But it also, with the higher density, is to get the transit system going, the bus system, and getting people walking and things like that, you need a higher density to, to get that kind of development going and to encourage more bus usage. And so that's the intent of, part of the intent of the TOD and the vision of the plan.
And it is right on the bus line?
It is on the bus line. Does that answer your question?
Yes. All right. Well, no more questions for, is the applicant here and would like to speak?
My name is Jeff Fisher. I'm with Fisher Construction, and I'd just like to thank the commission for their time in this matter, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have, we very rarely see people wanting to get into the TOD. What was your motivation for doing that?
Well, we have a site that's, that's kind of, I got, I call it an eyesore with the four single-family homes there, and we see an opportunity with growth coming, and we're willing to take a chance and clean up a corner lot there and make it look good from the street side, and that's kind of why we're asking to get into the TOD. And it just makes sense. We're surrounded by it. So rather than going for an MF zoning or something like that, we figured we'd just go with the TOD, and like I said, the stringent designs, we're okay with that. Landscaping, I think it'll look good.
The architecture, Jeff, and landscaping, all that will be brought to the city for approval for the administrator?
That's how I understand it. There'll be a site plan review on that to make sure that we meet the standards, and then we'll go through-
Right. And the public will have a chance to review that, Karen, or do you know?
The site plan review, that's one of the incentives in the TOD manual, is that we don't have to have multiple public hearings on projects. It allows a developer to start, so it is an administrative review.
But I mean, if the public won't have to come in to City Hall-
Oh, yeah. It's all public information, so they're welcome to come in and review the application.
And ask you, what, could I take a look at what it's going to look like?
Yes.
And I had some, you know, forms of that at the neighborhood meeting.
Good.
Some conceptual's there, you know, we're not, we're fine-tuning it and tweaking it, but at least they were able to see.
No, pretty-
Uh, no. I got it.
No?
I did get some pushback, and we understand.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And we understand.
All right, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mr. Commissioner, what is the distance between the proposed buildings and the apartment complex to the immediate north?
I believe that the setbacks are 18 feet from the, the street, I believe, on the front, and I believe my side setbacks could be seven and a half feet, or with the side in the rear yard, I believe, is a, is a 10-foot setback. But we don't plan on, we'd like them, the units that are going to be on that side there to have a little bit of a backyard and some space there, so we wouldn't be pushing those right up to the seven and a half foot mark. And, you know, we could put some trees, I mean, try and stay as far-
I'm asking that question because I happen to serve on the board of the nonprofit that built those-
Oh, okay.
Those facilities.
Oh, okay.
So, curious what they-
The existing apartments are the one, the two existing apartment buildings are the ones that are adjacent to the Aspen Village project.
Oh, that's, you're right.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about the single-family homes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you, we have this. This photo is an old photo, because that's the current that we have, but you can see the Aspen Village project is under construction here. These are the two, these right here are the existing apartment buildings.
So that, that won't be, it won't be immediately?
No.
All right.
The buildings will be along here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing night. Someone from the public that would like to come up and speak, if you could please give your name and address and come up and talk, so. And when you're done, please just give, sign in.
Sure.
Over at this.
Well, good evening. My name is Chuck Krens. My address is 2000 Brunetti Way, Sparks, Nevada. Okay, well, I've got three minutes, maybe less. I've lived in my home for 15 years. I purchased it from my cousins. My aunt and uncle, Jack Lambert and Marie Lambert, bought the home new back in the 60s. This project is directly behind my back fence, directly overlooking my backyard. Apparently, there's going to be four, eight, what, 32 units? And to my knowledge, looking on the internet with low-income people, that 32 unit number turns out to be at least twice that amount. I understand that there's going to be with this TOD project, 32 parking spaces plus a half added on to that, so that means there's going to be 48 parking spaces, and obviously, that's not going to be enough for what looks like there's going to be at least 60 or more people back there. I don't know about you people here, but I've lived here since 1964, and I really don't appreciate having this many people looking over my back fence when I have my grandchildren back there for barbecues, and my sons that have grown up here for barbecues. If this goes, then I'm moving. There's no question about that. And I don't want to, but that's the way it's going to be. I have a couple friends that are retired from Sparks PD, and I spoke with them, and a couple were, and they basically said that there is an issue with the corridor between El Rancho and Sullivan related to crime. So, you know, what I'm looking at here is, I understand that it's going to be a nice four-plex unit next to this other unit that they own that isn't coherent with the codes, I guess, because it was built in whenever, '30, '40, '60 through Washoe County. It's just, you know, the people that are going to be living back there, what are they going to be doing? What kind of deals are they going to be doing over my fence? I don't have small children that live with me now, other than my grandkids that come over, and my older sons. I have three dogs. I worry about them now, and that's another reason why I'm not going to live there if this stuff goes on behind my fence. You know, like, I'm off of progress, and the gentleman over here, he's going to build a nice project. I don't have a problem with that, but there are a lot of other places in the community where you don't have to build something, you know, right over somebody's fence. So they, two stories are going to be looking right into my back bedroom. You know, they've already built the other thing, fortunately, I at least got a notice on this one, because the other project I built back there, the three-story one, I never was notified. Anyways, thank you very much. You know, what's going to happen, going to happen.
All right. Thank you very much, Chuck. All right? Yes, sir? Just please state your name.
My name's Robert Houston. I live at 1200 Sullivan Lane, right on the corner, and I mean, just like he said, my backyard, there's people, just can be able to look right over there, see what I'm doing. I don't want that. You know, or, like I said, criminal element, you know, and low-income, I don't, you know, I've been around for a while. I know what goes on. I mean, they got rules, but they're always breaking the rules. You never know what's going to move in there. You know, my property value is, could go up, but it might go down, and I, you know, I don't want that to happen. I'm not a good speaker, sorry. But, you know, I think it's going to most directly affect my property, you know, the values. You know, and I, I'm afraid to make a- values, you know, and I'm afraid to make, you know. Improvements, yes, sorry. You know, and then, you know, and the property value drops no matter what I do to it. So, you know, I mean, I got a list here. You know, and it's like parking, I work a lot of graveyards, people pulling in and out of there all night, so I'm not going to get to sleep. I have a hard enough time already. I gotta take sleeping pills sometimes, I don't even like taking them, but, you know, it's hard. And because you can hear the traffic bailing in and out of there already, just from a few cars, you know, and then the bus system coming in, people cutting through my yard, throwing trash in, and I don't want that. You know, and they already do that bad enough, now it's going to be worse. And I know it's going to be worse. You know, and what else do we got here? You know, just, like I said, privacy, peace of mind, I want a peace of mind, knowing that my property's safe, you know, and I don't feel like it's going to be, if I, you know, I already got one property across the way, the apartments have been there, I moved in, fine, but they built that one on the corner, we never heard about it, just like you said, it just went up. When they had the meeting at the library last week for this, I never got a notice, the lady around the corner brought me the notice for the library, you know, I got this one, I appreciate that, but still, I couldn't make plans to go to the library one because I had to work, because I didn't know about it, you know, so I feel like I'm running out of time. I'm not a good speaker, sorry.
You're doing good, Robert.
I'm getting a little bent out of shape. Yeah, just the traffic and everything, it's going to be worse on me, like I said, I work graveyards, I just don't want it, I don't, I feel like it's just going to make my property value drop, you know, or maybe people coming in, you know, criminals moving in there, you get the low-income people, and maybe not the person, their boyfriends get out of jail. You know, I've seen it before in these places, so, I mean, it might not happen, but there's a good chance it could happen, and I just don't want it there. Like I said, I'm going to probably end up having to sell my house and move too because I don't want to be there. I've got enough apartments around me already, you know, why can't they build some houses there or something, you know, something a little more convenient, or, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a good speaker. Just something that looks better to us, you know, makes our property look better, not a bunch of apartments. I just don't need them. I'm done, I mean, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. All right, anybody else from the public like to speak on this item?
Can I, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
This is not a low.
Well, yeah, if you could please come up and speak.
This is not a low-income project. There's no special funding, and we're not, you know, taking people out of jail and putting them up, I mean, this is private money in a private complex, so I just want to make that clear, that this is not a low-income project. Just like to make that for the record.
Thank you, absolutely, George.
Question, is there going to be an onsite manager to manage some of?
You know, that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting, and I've talked with my clients about it, I haven't got an answer on that, but I mean, we've, it's already a well-managed site the way it is right now, I can't imagine, you know, my client not managing the site. I mean, we're going to be spending.
I mean, in terms of the issues of bringing up like trash and all, I mean?
Absolutely. I mean, we have, we have site management there, I mean, they're there every day checking on things, and if there's a complaint or something, if the homeowners want to give us a call, I'm sure we'd, we'd take care of it.
Can you speak for a moment about, both of the speakers so far have talked about the view from the, presumably the second floor, looking down over the other, the houses. Have you, in your site plan, have you begun to think about anything you can do to ameliorate that issue?
We've, some suggestions were to make the windows a little bit higher in the rear of those homes. You know, the only thing that we have issue with that, and we're just in the planning stages now, is if the bedrooms are in the back, we've got to have egress to meet codes of the, you know, at least one window would have to be low enough in that bedroom for somebody to get out in case of a fire. But we would take all that into consideration on our designs.
What about any possibility of looking at either the fencing or landscaping that would?
You know, that's all well and good, you know, the fence and the landscaping, but I mean, for a second, for the second story, the, you know, the second floor, I mean, I can't plant twenty-foot trees along there, you know, it'd take a while for them to grow. I guess you could do some weeping sequoias along the fence or something like that, it'd grow tall eventually, but we could, we could look at something like that.
That would look good, weeping sequoias.
The mix of these four, is it one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, how's that?
It's going to be, we're thinking all one-bedroom units.
Okay. And do you put a limit on the amount of members that are individuals that can live in a one-bedroom apartment? I mean, I don't know if that's.
At the neighborhood meeting, I heard that there's people with fourteen people living in one unit, that's not, that's something that we wouldn't.
Especially as a private property.
We wouldn't allow, right.
Yeah.
People are suggesting that maybe they're going to be parked on the streets in front of their house, or will there be enough parking spaces for?
There, well, there has to be, or we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to do the project, so we're going to have to make sure that we have enough parking for our units.
Exactly, that's what I wanted to bring in today.
Right. And the whole idea behind the TOD, you know, if you read into it, you know, it's to start eliminating cars and start using mass transit and rapid transit.
That's all.
I tried to explain that at the meeting, you know, that this is a vision, you know, it's almost like the Hundred Year Storm Plan, you know, we're looking out past when you and I are here, and you know, as we evolve, we get into that rapid transit, and I think it's a good fit.
You bet. I do want to mention something for the commission. We're not discussing any kind of building designs, any kind of things like that, we're just, what's in front of us tonight is the rezoning from R16 to the transitory development or a TOD design, has nothing to do with the building designs or anything that is in future. So those questions may be better posed at another time possibly, but what's in front of us now is just the rezoning change, so just to reiterate that. But they're all good questions. Yes, Doug?
I think that's exactly right. In that same vein, though, if Ms. Melby could come back. Ken, would you touch on kind of the screening and the transition portions of the TOD plan and how we try to deal with kind of the change from single-family residential to multifamily residential to commercial within the, within the core of this type of project?
There are standards within the TOD manual for residential design that if you are doing a multifamily project adjacent to single-family, that there has to be some step back or something to accommodate that the fact that you're sticking an apartment complex next to existing residential, there are standards on that. And addressing things like the window location, things like that are all addressed as standards within the TOD manual. And we would look at those specifically when we come in with the actual design plans.
Right, so while Chairman Funes is of course correct, we're not talking about the specific building design tonight, at the point at which we are talking about that, the issue, many of the issues discussed here in the public comment portion of this item will be addressed, is that correct?
That's correct, we would address those as, and they are addressed as standards within the TOD manual. And he will have to comply with the, if it's approved to be taken into the TOD district, then he will have to comply with those standards.
Then in the meetings that you talk about with design and all that, will people be noticed, or they can come in and talk to you?
That's administrative, so there is no noticing.
There's no noticing.
Yeah. But, I mean, people can contact me, and I'd be glad to, when we get the application, I'd be glad to contact them and let them know that they can come in and look at the application. One other comment, I just want to let everybody know that this will have to go to regional planning and then city council, so just to let the public know, we will not, it looks like it'll be going, the master plan amendment would be going to regional planning in July, so this item will not be going before city council until probably August. Just to let the public know.
So there'll be another hearing?
At the public, there will be a public hearing at city council, but that will not be until August because of.
There will be another meeting at regional planning.
Yes, mhm.
Will folks be noticed for that?
I don't believe they notice at regional planning, no.
So, just so possibly the public can know the timeframe of when possibly they could contact you for these designs, you're looking at an August regional planning?
No, it'd be July eighth that goes to regional planning, and then probably the first meeting in August, and I don't know what that is. Council meets the second and fourth Monday of the month, so whatever the second Monday of August is, that would be when it would be going to city council most likely.
Okay. And then, let's say it all, this is with the crystal ball goes through and everything's fine, the plans possibly could be coming, do you, in the fall, winter typically, what time will be?
August or September, I would just say that you would want to get your plans into us.
Just for the?
Yeah.
For the public's knowledge, okay. Thank you, Karen.
Uh-huh.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
We're still the public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like?
I just have one question, when he got to come up and speak again, can I just say one other thing?
Sure, go ahead. Yes, sir. Yes, Chuck.
I want to pronounce your last name, George, but you asked him.
My wife doesn't either.
You asked him about how many people would be in each property?
Each apartment.
Each apartment.
Yes.
And he never answered that, other than to say that some people at this last meeting said there were fourteen people. You know, he never said that they were going to police, you know, whether it's going to be one, two, three, or four. You know, I'm not asking him to do that, but he just never made it clear that there's only going to be, you know, thirty-two people living there. The other question is, he said it's not going to be a low-income, well, it's probably not going to be subsidized as a low-income, but this project, these four buildings that he's building next to the other two apartment complexes that they already own, I'm under the impression those are already low-income. I mean, I see the people that have lived there for fifteen years, and I know that, I'm certain none of them are members out of Red Hawk or golf out at Lake Ridge or anything like that. So, you know, I don't see where, you know, you're going, we're going to get a higher clientele of residents, you know, coming into this area, any more than, you know, you know, there's good people that live there, and I'm sure a lot of these people are going to be great people, I have no problems with that, I'm not a prejudiced man, but our demographics have changed a lot since the sixties and seventies and since I've lived there since two thousand, you know, I don't foresee it going to be much better, having some of these people move in in such a small confined space. Okay, well, thanks.
You know, Chuck, one thing real quick, is that it would be discriminate against low-income, high-income or whatever, on any, it's a.
Right.
So.
I'm just answering.
No, I know, he said they're going to be run back.
You know, they already have the two projects over there, and.
Who knows, you might have Elon Musk moving there.
Pardon me?
You might have Elon Musk moving there, who knows?
The Tesla guy?
Yeah.
I don't know who that is.
The Tesla.
He's one of them.
Okay, well, he probably would have moved in there a few years ago when he went bankrupt. He did, and then he got his money back, I know that, Louis. Yeah, no, I, you know, I guess we'll just see what we see, you know, and progress for Sparks, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, I just know that there's a lot of areas that projects can be built, and I'll get out of here. Thanks.
Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else from the public? Please, ma'am, please state your name. Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Tuesday, and I also live with Chuck in our home at two thousand Burnettie Way. We are in a cul-de-sac, so our fence line is directly where this property is. On the other side, as he said, we were not informed of the three-story apartment complex that was built. Kids are constantly playing over there, throwing garbage over our fence. That's one of my issues. The other issue is at least there on the side of us, so there's no windows going into our home, but we have no more privacy in our backyard at all. I mean, when we sit in our backyard, you feel people staring at you. But now with this complex, they'll be two-story, and it'll be over the fence and into our bedrooms. And I just, you know, not only would we move out, of course, but our property value is going to go down, and we'll be lucky to be able to rent it to a family that would want somebody looking into their yard. Going to be a lot more traffic on Sullivan for residents to be coming in and out of K Street and in that area. It's congested already with not even crosswalks there where Aspen Village or whatever it is over there, they're constantly jumping out into the road. Now, we're going to have this eight-plex with thirty-two-plus people, and gosh knows, I mean, Haymarket's right across the street, you know, I mean, they're going to just walk across the street, and there's, I believe, there's going to be some fatalities, whether it's kids, animals, you know, adults or whatever. So I'm not for it, but, you know, in my opinion, I think they could build something other than a bunch of one-bedroom apartments. If there's three homes there, why not build three more homes on there to make it look nice, you know, and up the rent or whatever? But at the meeting, he had said that he was going to be renting them for about five hundred dollars a month. So, you know, that's not low-income, I don't know what it is then. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
I'm going to be very quick because I'm not a good talkative speaker either, but I'm Dalla Houston. My husband is Robert. I live at twelve hundred Sullivan Lane. My property, along with their property, mine is, I believe, the one that's going to be most directly affected by this project. His property, or my property, what he's proposing is, I'm not sure whether it's seven and a half or ten feet off my property line. And again, like what they've said, I don't want all these one-bedroom apartments with fifteen million people going back and forth and in and out. I'm not for it. I, this is my first home, I've honed it five years now, and we've done a lot of little things, and we want to do more things, and honestly, if this proposal goes through, I'm selling, I'm out. I'm not going to, I'm not going to risk our safety, our privacy, our peace of mind, my husband's sleep, my sleep, and that's all I have to say, I'm just definitely not for it.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, well, any rest of the public wanting to speak? Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Michelle, I don't suggest a motion for the master plan amendment. I move forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 15017 based on the findings NP one through NP four and the facts supporting these findings that set forth in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, but I would like to ask the staff if it goes, gets through the entire process and comes to the design phase of this, that we do everything that is reasonable to ameliorate the issues of second-floor oversight with the surrounding properties and take that into as much consideration as is possible.
Okay, we, any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to vote nay.
I'm going to vote nay also.
Okay. Well, I think the ayes have it, so, motion passes.
To plan amendment, do you have to give a reason why you vote nay? No?
It's, it passed, so.
Okay, it passed. Okay?
I'm prepared to make a second motion.
Okay.
I move forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the rezoning associated with PCN 15017 based on findings Z one through Z three and the facts supporting these findings.
with PCN 15017 based on findings Z1 through Z3 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guess me, nay.
I'm nay too.
Okay, two nays. So, passes.
Karen, real quick, when is the regional planning action list coming up?
July 8th.
July 8th? You might check the regional planning agency on 9th Street, your meeting's usually at 6 o'clock on July 8th. You bet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, so moving along, we're going to move to general business, which is PCN 12010 Red Hawk Land Company.
I, I think Merrily is trying to get some official names there.
Okay. So, we didn't give her a name. Karen Melby presenting.
Karen Melby, senior planner. I'll start with my presentation and then we can go over where it is located. This is a consideration and possible action on the request for a final approval of the plan development handbook, which has been found in substantial conformance with the tentative handbook for a property zone new urban district, which is the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. This agenda of item was considered by the planning commission, the tentative handbook was considered by the planning commission on May 17th in 2012. Prior to the planning commission taking action on this item, the applicant asked to withdraw a request associated with villages 5A and 20A. The planning commission approved the remaining master plan amendments request and forwarded a recommendation of the tentative approval of, of the amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook to the city council. The item was originally considered by city council on April 8th, 2013. The council voted to table the item. It was untabled and reviewed on November 24th, 2014. The city council granted approval of the tentative handbook amendment. Before you tonight is the final handbook, which is addressing or including all of the changes. They include, the changes included addition of several new villages, changes to the land use map and table, changes to the setbacks within the builder lots and the patio home designations. Staff has reviewed the final draft. I, on the doc you can't hear, I've outlined in red, this is the boundary for the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. This would be Pioneer Meadows, this would be the foothills in Cimarron to the north. This would be Vista Boulevard coming through here and here's Pyramid to give you reference. The staff reviewed the final draft of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook and all the changes have been incorporated as approved by council on May 20, November 24th in 2014. The staff is of the opinion that the final approval of the draft Wingfield Spring Handbook does not vary the proposed gross residential density or intensity of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Standards Handbook. It does not vary the proposed ratio of the residential to non-residential uses. It does not reduce the common open space area. There is no increase to the floor area proposed for the non-residential use for the proposed tentative handbook and there is no increase in the total ground area covered by the planned, the buildings nor the substantial change in the heights of the buildings. These are the five findings that is in the state law for, to be addressed with a final handbook. It's the staff's opinion that the final draft for the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook is in substantial compliance with the approved tentative handbook. I conclude my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Karen? Yeah, was that applicant hearing would like to speak?
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, my name is Jackie Sino and I'm here on behalf of Red Hawk Land Company. Been working with Karen and prior to working with Karen, I worked with Tim Thompson over the last few years. Everything that's coming before you tonight, the changes, came before you in May of 2012, so really all of that stays the same. I'm in full agreement with all of the changes that we're proposing and I can answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
I have sort of a question or, or a comment.
Sure.
I, I don't think it impacts our, my, my willingness to move forward with this project, but the three villages, as I understand them, if I'm reading the map correctly, one will be right in and right out only, the second one will be right in and right out only going the other direction and the, the one that's across from Anytime Fitness and Riley's there, whatever that, the walking path, is, has, I see having potentially significant issues with left-hand turns not being possible from Vista and if my memory serves correctly, U-turns not permissible at the windmill. So I, I think there are some issues and that doesn't impact our approval, but I'm assuming these are things that you've thought about and either are willing to come to grips with or have answers to, is that correct?
Yes, no, that's correct and we are aware of some of those issues. What we usually will do with any project is we'll just look at any parcels that we might consider underutilized and so these changes that we propose to the handbook just give us maximum flexibility. We don't plan on developing those particular parcels anytime soon, but we know, but we're working with engineers to try to develop solutions to the exact issues that you just brought up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seen none, bring it back for any discussion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Volz?
I moved forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of PCN 12010 as the final draft is in substantial compliance with the city council action on the tentative approval of the amendment to Win, to Wingfield Springs Plan Development and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Motion and a second, have any discussion? All right, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, pass. Thank you. And if we could have a five-minute recess, we'll convene at 7:00?
I'll let you know when it's going to count.
03. Thank you.
Everything we do needs to focus on creating jobs-
Okay, can we start it? I'm going to, yeah, going to open it up to public comment, if anybody from the public would like to speak, you have three minutes to talk about it. Seen known, we'll close the public comment and then move to any comments from any of the commissioners. Anybody has any comment? No? All right, then we will adjourn. Thank you.